Some prayer, please.
Yes. I have a father like you for this beautiful day. I just present them and all of us get together. Let's hope we leave here and we're better friends than what we are right now. So everything goes okay. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Everyone stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ben Clark, you call the role, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Simkins.
Here.
Mr. Eby.
Here.
Mr. McElwain.
Here.
Mr. Beatty.
Here.
Mr. Dawson.
Here.
Ms. Spicer.
Here.
Mr. Buckner.
Here.
Mr. Ellis.
Here.
Mr. Petty.
Here.
Mr. Williams.
Here.
Ms. Hayes. Mr. Reed.
We do have a quorum. As I told you in the earlier in the Budget Committee meeting that Commissioner Hayes still a little into the weather, hopefully she thinks she'll be back in three weeks on our June 7th meeting. First order of business is approval of April 19, 2021 minutes. To have a motion to approve. Second, first motion by McElwain, second by Reed. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, vote with stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed, thank you. Item number two, committee reports, Commissioner Simkins.
Mr. Janet passed out a flyer there on the meeting, on our county extension with a 4H and other things, a lot of good reading in there. We was treated to it the night of the meeting. Our speaker, and she's, her picture's there, and she's in the running for the, where's Ms. Janet? State, estate, I think. And she really did a good job at night. We appreciate having that youth, that young, being interested in doing that. And also, Ms. Janet, would, do you want to say something about Mark Garrison tonight? Or you want to wait on that? If you would, just come forward and let us, let us know what was going on there.
I had told Commissioner Simkins that Dr. Mark Garrison, who serves as our Agriculture and Natural Resources Extension Agent, has submitted his resignation. He will, his last day will be June the 3rd, and he's leaving to start his own business. So we'll be getting that position posted later this summer and going through the process of hiring a new Extension Agent.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Simkins. Any other committees to report? Hearing none, next order of business appointments. Both these individuals are to be reappointed to the E-911 Board, Mr. Scott England and Mr. Timothy Span. Open for a motion, motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Ellis. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, vote with stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed, thank you. Next order of business resolutions, quarterly financial reports, all school funds, Board of Education representatives. We know Mr. Steve Sorrell's here today. You received those two weeks ago. These are the quarterly reports as opposed to the budget. Do you have any questions on those from Mr. Sorrells? Is anything you'd like to present, Mr. Sorrells?
No, sir, just, we're blessed to have strong revenues. It's nice to hear.
Thank you. This is to approve the quarterly reports. I'll open the floor for a motion. Motion by Commissioner Eby, second by Commissioner Spicer. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, vote with stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed, thank you. Next is quarterly financial reports, all funds except schools. Mr. Hall, is there any questions for Mr. Hall? All non-school funds. Hearing no questions, open floor for a motion. Motion by Commissioner Reed, second by Commissioner Beatty. Any discussions or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, vote with stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed, thank you. Item number three, amendments, all funds except school, Mr. Hall.
Mayor, I do have something here to add on the amendments for the general fund. I myself made an error here, making some adjustments on the library. I do have showing a reduction in the library's budget overall, and that is basically a no-no because they're an MOE, a maintenance of effort. So I happened to catch it this afternoon. It's a reduction, I'm showing a $621, and their budget, like I said, is a maintenance of effort budget. So I need to add the budget, the $621 reduction back in 432 library books. So their budget will reflect $557,000, $557,838. So thankfully, I caught that today, just kind of going back over it this afternoon. So instead of it showing a reduction, it will be $557,838. So that won't be a reduction.
So, uh, do we know where it's charged to?
I did show an increase there. Let me find that, Mr. Simkins. I increased it by $320,000.
And all of it, thank you, you were big voters.
Well, not all of it, but a big portion of it.
A portion.
Yeah. But yeah, that, I just wanted to make note of that, so.
Thank you. With that change that Mr. Hall brought, I'm looking for a motion to approve these amendments. Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Buckner. Any questions for Mr. Hall? Hearing none, all in favor, vote with stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed, thank you. Item number four, requests for unclaimed property from the state, Ms. Greer.
I explained, well, I explained that process where we're requesting our expenditures that have been spent, that have been idly laying there with the Department of Treasury, and then we request them back. And that Ms. Pendergrass will invest the money, and the monies, the money's made on that investment the county gets to keep, but the monies will stay in the total as those people's money. I mean, it's always there for them to get. But we have to request it, and we have to have an approval from you all.
Open the floor for a motion. Motion by Commissioner Spicer, second by Commissioner McElwain. Any questions from Ms. Greer? Hearing none, all in favor, vote with stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed, thank you. Item number five, building services contract, Mr. Bear. This was a bid process that he brought forward to you, y'all last week, or two weeks ago, had moved forward, and Mr. Bear is, where is he? Okay. I put a bell on him. Is any questions for Mr. Bear? He, we chose the lowest and best, and that's what this bid's for. Motion by Commissioner Simkins to have a second, second by Commissioner Beatty. Any discussion or any questions for Mr. Bear? Hearing none, all in favor, vote with stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Bear. Item number six, capital outlay note for solid waste department equipment, Mr. Hall.
I don't have anything to add to that probably, the capital outlay notes are probably the same as your office initially or something.
We had, we had two different ones. These are budgeted items, as we discussed two weeks ago. The, we're just now getting those, Highway Department's just now getting those ordered, and we're, well, actually we've got them, and we're getting the funding for them to put in the budget. So I'll open the floor for a motion. Motion by Commissioner, McElwain, second by Commissioner Beatty. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, vote with stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed, thank you. Item number seven is also the other capital outlay note that we brought to you last month, two weeks ago, I'll get it right, to have a motion for approval. Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Reed. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, vote with stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed, thank you. Item number eight is the Tennessee Housing Development Agency Home Grant application. This is a grant that we need the county commission's approval to apply for. Again, reminder, one of the Tennessee Housing Development Agency offers a home grant up to $500,000. It is, obviously comes from Tennessee Housing Development Agency as a grant. We have GNRC, Greater National Regional Council manages that. The county government is a pass-through on that, so it's in your budget showing $500,000 in as a revenue, and also $500,000, $500,000 out as expense. This is to help people with homeownership and lower income, to do repairs on their home and make them more livable. We used to apply for this on a regular basis, but after Dixon County became more affluent and moved into a tier one county, we haven't been able to receive this grant. But so many counties are doing so well now, we were advised by the Greater National Regional Council that it might be an opportunity to apply for this again, because the funds could become available to us. So there's no, no cost to us on this, other than just putting it inside our budget and act as a pass-through. It's, we did several in early years when I was here, and it helped upgrade homes, because even though Dixon County is doing very well financially and is employment and things of that type, there's always pockets of need, and we want to be able to reach out to those individuals and help them. So that's what this is. So I'll open the floor to a motion for us to have permission to approve for this grant. Motion by Commissioner Eby, I have second, second by Commissioner Spicer. Any discussion? Hearing none, hearing none, all in favor, vote with stating aye. Opposed, thank you. Item number nine is Westcott Road speed limit. Commissioner Dawson has my name behind it, but you brought this forward. You have a resolution in front of you. Mr. Reagan was that, the speed limit, I know there's still some discussion on that. We left that blank on the resolution, so that could be decided by this body tonight. So we'll, I'll open the floor for discussion on that.
Okay. There's been a couple of twists and turns in this thing that's come up tonight. First thing, the first part of Westcott Road is a city. Speed limit is 25 miles per hour. Okay, 10 of the names that it's boy, that actually made application to lower the speed limit, group spots used them 10 people's names that's in the city that came pertaining to this, you know, in the county road. All right, so I looked, when I make a motion to do is maybe put this thing off, we get together, and I like the sheriff, the sheriff done a survey, and he said that the average speed of them out there, there were so many cars, it was 11 miles per hour for one day. Now, if they're, of course, that's, that's hard, I mean, that's hard to believe, but that's what he's come up with. So he's gonna do another, and he recommends to, you know, sort of lead one. That's, is that all right?
Yes, sir, I would recommend that if this council sees fit to run another study. The study was done on the lower part, there's really one large stretch on Westcott that I could see. So I went out there myself and surveyed the locations. We had two locations. The one location was done. I feel like we do the next location, you'll have better data to reach a decision on whether to lower or raise the speed limit, or lower the speed limit, sorry.
Yeah, we also need to get these names that pertain to actually the county road, that once the deals out there got property, that actually should be out making the application. I mean, Brett, he done a lot of names, and then his complaints, Brian, sort of agree with it, and all these people that he got, they don't live on Westcott Road, but they live in the city or in the city of White Bluff. Well, part of the road's in the city, so he can use the name. See what I'm saying? So it's really, it's really messed up.
Would you like us to move this down to the June 21st meeting?
Yeah, I would, that moving down, yeah, we'll just move it forward, and we'll get it straightened out and everything.
Okay.
But now, the front part of the road was 25 mile an hour, White Bluff. I mean, I didn't, I didn't check that out, because I never knew until the night that part of the road was in one. I mean, so it, to me, I mean, you know, with 25 mile an hour, I told Brett, I said, you know, it hurt enough, it was 30, but it's not no way to change it, because it's not, it's messed up. I mean, you know, all these people want it, don't want it, so I mean, we don't know. I'd like to see maybe the sheriff of the roads and lieutenant, we started some type of committee to look at these roads that's in the county and let the people petition them, and let them bring it to us. They put us in a bind, you know, space that we really shouldn't be in, because, I mean, we make people mad over a speed limit on a road, and it ought to be done for that love, the shared property of the road. I like the biggest majority of the petition, great.
Okay, we'll take a look at that. You know, we did start that several years ago by getting their input before we made a decision, but we can look at retooling that. So if there's no objection, we're going to move this item to the June 21st meeting. Hearing no objection, that's been moved. Next item of business is approval of notaries, Madam Clark.
Michelle Alexander, Lisa Bach, Diane Bishop, Tona, Davidson Garner, Rebecca Lampley, Stephanie Nogira, Thomas Phi, Carissa Proctor, Sheree Smith, Joseph Ulbridge, Jessica Ward, and Jan Weatherly.
Open the floor for a motion. Motion by Commissioner Buckner, second by Commissioner Reed. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, vote with stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed, thank you. Skip to other business, had one thing I want to go over with you on that. We, and I told you back during the budget hearing two weeks ago, we're in discussion with the City of Dixon on the property at the old Jackson Academy or hospital, whatever, whenever you were born, how you refer to it. We owned that property at this point, but it didn't sell through a tax sale. So it'll be up to this body on to decide what to do on that. The one suggestion, after working at the City of Dixon, is, is to find a place to have a farmer's market. As you know, we have the farmer's market now at the ambulance service emergency operations center on Cowan Road, which has worked out well for a good long time. But the unfortunate issue with that is, with our growth in our emergency services, and we house some other vehicles over there for the rescue squad in particular, at our, that deal, that facility's really becoming overcrowded, and it's on the weekends, especially when there's a farmer's market going on, that's become an issue. So what we'd like to take a look at and explore with the City of Dixon is the possibility of moving the farmer's market to that land. The overall discussions on that are that we would retain ownership of that property, but the construction of that would be split between the City of Dixon and Dixon County. The City of Dixon at this point, in which they have to get approval through their council, much like y'all have to approve it too, is to, they will, their idea is they will maintain the property on that, but will retain ownership. I just want to give you that idea that it's out here now. We haven't put anything together on that, but we do need to do something with that property at that point. It's deteriorated, it's not in a position we could do anything with it. So our options, obviously, are to do something jointly with the City of Dixon, or we could turn around and sell the property. Again, I can sit here, we can debate this over time, because I really need y'all's input on it. The only issue I see, if we don't do this, here in a few years, we're going to be in a pinch where we do need to get the farmer's market away from the ambulance service, and right now we have available land and opportunity, a possible opportunity to the City of Dixon partner with us. So just want to throw that out there. It's in the capital outlay budget, but that's what I asked for some latitude on two weeks ago, but at the same time, that has not been approved by y'all. So I'll have to, once we get an idea, if you want me to go forward with it, and if y'all will talk to me individually, as you have time over the next three weeks before our next meeting, I'll speak with the City of Dixon if you'd like me to go forward, and then we'll bring a concept back for y'all to vote on, on that. Yes. The building is in disrepair, the, if you're familiar with the building, the old portion of the building, on the far right, or if you're facing it on the northern end, it's collapsing. There was a fire set some time ago in the basement, and it's unsafe, so that portion of the building could not be recovered under any circumstances. The middle portion could be, some work could be done on that, but weight is chopped up from when they put in the cells for the Jackson Academy. It's, right now, I'd call it functional obsolete, there's really not a lot you could do with that. So again, I'll be glad to answer any questions on that right now, but that's a concept. Mayor Weiss is sharing it with his city council tonight, just as I'm sharing with you, but since it's a joint project, we kind of need to walk hand in hand if y'all would like for me to go forward with that. But there's not any heavy time limit on it, but the money's in the budget and capital outlay, but if, the fund balance on that. On that, I can get you that number. Fortunately, it's managed for us by Ms. Cluck through the UT Ag Center. There's a, there's a fee that the group charges, I don't know what it is now.
$50 is the vendor's fee for the year. The vendors have a choice of paying it for $100, sending it in the back end of reserves socks, and they're in the same location each time. And we do facilitate the market along with the chamber, so the funding, the payments from the vendors go through the chamber, and then any expenses to pay.
You know, if it don't create a movement, then that, a year, and then, well, I think we look at this relaxing, evolve, let the people, the farmers, set up somewhere or another, and sell the products, like they used to. I mean, I never could understand when they changed the laws against the law for a farmer that comes where it's selling, or you're raising. I mean, to me, that, that make good sense. I like, I mean, on record, this would be, I like that.
Well, so much of that, again, I'll have that discussion, City of Dixon, the vending laws would apply on city streets, would be to each individual city on how they do that, so that would be up to them. Honestly, we haven't had a lot of requests in the county to do that, so I'd need to have our attorney kind of research that to see where we need to be. The idea, though, behind in a central place is, is that I think, in my opinion, when you have everyone grouped together, it's kind of like having a mall, you've got a lot of choices, don't have to drive over the county to find corn here and green beans somewhere else.
It's just, it's just the idea of the farmer having to pay, the county to pay taxes, and all that, any sort of place to sell, I mean, it's just, it's another thing, just to make freedom of way, from here, every day, work, be part of it. I mean, it's, it's, it's very easy.
I understand, thank you. Commissioner McElwain?
Thanks, you interviewed a good question, all the markets, and I'll should get that more.
Yeah, that's a good question. I heard the farmer's market's already been determined.
I don't know about that. But we'll decide more.
Probably would. Be a good option. Commissioner Spicer?
I've been rocking up, you know, clarification. Are we have something to say on Facebook? Confirm, and I said, oh, that's one of the things they do. That, two favorable sources have come that just had, you know, that's going to be going to White Bluff. Now, are we not the ones to make, um, do, do people hear that situation, that not working, that they use, or that don't know?
That's an excellent question, I'll be glad to answer it. Things are great, I know.
I'll go on record saying that.
I'm not playing, I'm just playing something, um...
I don't know, I'm reading that, I don't read Trump during daylight hours, I'm too busy, so, but I have a lot of people like to share it with me. Let's see, can't read it here. Do you have the, I'll read your, I can't, this is so small, I can't even see it. I'll be glad to read it, I don't put you on the spot. I heard I've appointed a committee.
Yeah, I thought you appointed Darryl Davis, the chairman. What year did you do that?
Yeah, you know, I'm still looking for that, too. So, you know, I worked with a guy years ago, when I first got out of college, and his name was Tom Williams. He trained me a lot of things, and one of the deals was going door-to-door sales for small businesses, and he would tell a story every time I was there, but it would change every time, and I was like, Tom, that story's not the same. And he said, Bob, you got to understand, never let the truth get in the way of a good story. So, you know, and again, with Facebook, it seems like we're getting a lot of that, so I've heard, we appointed a committee and all kinds of cool stuff, so, you know, I don't really understand it. I'll tell one more story, and I'll get to the point. When I was in college at UT Martin, back then, we didn't have cable TV, and you could only watch Channel 7 out of Jackson, so at lunchtime, the only thing we could watch was All My Children. So it's all of those big burly guys in there watching All My Children. It actually took me two years to figure out how many people Erica Kane had been married to, if you ever watched All My Children. So a lot of times when you show up late to a project, and so obviously the people at Field Terminal are quite upset, that it's, we don't let the truth get in the way of a good story. You know, this project started years ago, and again, off and on, I've had different stories about looking at doing an ag center. I was approached pretty early on, after I was elected mayor about it, but I think y'all all know our financial condition at the time, so that's something we pushed to the back burner. After seeing that email that had a lot of things, apparently I did, I wasn't aware of, you know, sometimes, early onset, you never know what's going on. But I looked at it, and I was reminded that this thing really heated back up in 2017, where Michael Adams at the Water Authority of Dixon County, let's see, Rhonda Adams at the Chamber, and Karen Seals, Karen Seals, they came to visit, and the idea was that they, the ag committee that's a part of the Chamber of Commerce, they were looking to build an ag center and want to know where we'd be on it. There was a lot of discussion, I can't remember sequentially, but there was several properties looked at. One of them was the fairgrounds, the back eight acres over there. Another was the Leather's Mill property over on Walnut Street. There was Charlotte, and that evil Darryl James did a lot of work on that over there. They hired him off the ag, the ag committee hired him to do engineering, to move it on the Lions Club side, but he didn't charge him for that, but he did it for free. But as he did that, they came to find you'd have to spend a lot of money to get that correct. So there's been a lot of discussion at different locations, the South Dixon County, the Titan area, White Bluff, that seems to be the hottest one right there, and there are discussions going on by a lot of people on how to go about doing this, because an ag center's always seemed to be a need. So I see it's carried on a life of its own today, but like I said, that's pretty much it. I'm always amazed when I'm in meetings and deals that I don't remember, so it does get me worried, as I'm even in my 60s, that I may not be remember everything, but, you know, whatever you have, things like that on Facebook, it gets tiresome, but it keeps everybody wound up, because what you don't see on that site was, as I shared with y'all on two occasions, many people on that have signed up... on two occasions, many people on that have signed a petition asking for me to be investigated by the district attorney. Several of you got phone calls asking for me to be investigated, which I was. The irony is, that's not, never been put on that site, because that does interrupt the narrative of what they're trying to accomplish. So are you trying to win, are you trying to be honest? So I think you can typically do things both ways on that, but I think that's what we're seeing here on this, and it's gone on for a year. You know, it's, like I said, it's tiresome because it's not building the community, and the most amazing thing is, the county, the county's phone number is still 789-7000, and Ms. Frazier, you've been here a long time, I don't remember when it was in 789-7000. So the funny thing is, when you quote sources, I'll tell you who the best source is, if I'm involved, it's me, so maybe I'll get a phone call on that, so, but thank you for asking, I'm glad to clarify. Is there anything else y'all had on that?
The settlement in there brings up the idea, it says in particular, "A ag center
or another community project." I've had people from White Bluff, in particular Rustic Grove, contact me. I went out with him about two months ago and looked at a piece of property down on Girl Scout Road that the City of Burns owns. He feels that the City of Burns, because they're being, putting the crosshairs on this, that maybe the project needs to go there for recreation or whatever. You know, the Titan property, the availability of that, but that would have more traffic to my road, and some of you people are better with the smells than I am, but that can get kind of aromatic on a good day. But, you know, there's a lot of different ideas on that, but I think as we all know, the only body that can make a decision is this. I can bring you suggestions, and I will continue to bring you suggestions, that's what I'm paid to do, but we're going to vet every idea that's out there. Yes, there are discussions with White Bluff and leaders in the community of White Bluff, along with the City of Burns and others, so it's a little disingenuous when you only tell a portion of the story. So, you know, I know some of the folks here in this room tonight probably have an interest in it, but I'm easy to be found, so I'd be glad to answer any questions here, during the meeting, or after. So, there's no need to put it on Facebook. I mean, because we've gotten to that point, you know, you pay attention to commandments, but apparently if you're on Facebook, the ninth commandment's been kicked out the window. So, bearing false witness, you know, that's, that's one of those, I'm not going to preach you on you, I'm a Methodist, so you badges Church of Christ will outdo me, but as a Methodist, I know that's one of you take care of, so, and maybe that's a requirement in the fine print when you hit agree when you're on Facebook, but, you know, destroy people's lives and characters, and, you know, and again, to put the county under the gun, because it actually hurts all the citizens, you know. There's going to be county commissioners and mayors after me, but, you know, I'll sleep well on knowing what I've done, and I'm going to continue to as long as I'm mayor, so.
Mayor, see, it, it, I was still discussing going on in White Bluff.
Yes.
But, I mean, seriously, I'm not, I mean, I'm not saying anything, whatever, I just wanted, wanted, I mean, because I got a little bit of influence up here, I got a lot, I got a lot of friends, I mean, why wouldn't I be, you know, in, in, in lieu?
Because nothing's to that point as far as I know. You need to consider, when this deal was brought to us, it wasn't a county project, it was bought by the ag committee of the Dixon County Chamber of Commerce, and it's those people, you said, they came to me and others in this community asking for our assistance. Initially, again, we can break it down, one of the deals we looked at that has gone by was at the, at the fairgrounds where my, the request was, we need a million dollars at that point in time to do it, and my suggestion was that maybe the county come up with third, with your approval, the city council being in Dixon, come up with third, and they raised a third. It's been all these kind of discussions, so whatever, these are...
I'm not complaining saying you do anything wrong.
No, no.
I'm just saying that we ought to be involved more in anything, everything going on in the county, then we, at least we'd have a chance to look at something, talk to people, go have a town hall meeting or whatever, but see, then you come up, we talk about that at the beginning, like she's talking on Facebook, I didn't know that.
Well, no, the conversation is, it was in your settlement agreement, and it said, in your settlement agreement that y'all approved two months ago was that it was to do an ag center or another community project, it gave you latitude. The question had always been, over an ag center...
You talked about what you talked about.
The million dollars.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes.
I mean, why not, why not, I mean, you know?
You know, this, hang on, that is fine, I mean, this is still moving forward, nobody's handing anybody a million dollars yet, so, and again, the Turnbull Preservation Group's talking about doing more lawsuits and things of that type, so we may be talking about something that happened three or four years from now. Hopefully it's something in six months. Yes, Commissioner Reed? No, you're okay. I love you.
And I was going to say, it wouldn't be getting until they were up and running, so it's been, so you're talking several years now.
I guess, I mean, I don't know what their operational time is, I know it's been delayed because of the lawsuits on that. I think initially it was going to be this fall, which obviously is not going to happen. I mean, I know they've done dirt work up there, but I don't know if they've started any construction work at this point in time. They probably have since the lawsuit, the initial lawsuit was ruled on.
I mean, that, that ag thing they're talking about, the community, they have like the doctors also going to donate some land.
And you'll hear another, just like over at Charlotte and White Bluff, and there's been a lot of places people said they're going to donate land to, to put that on if they want to do it. I've heard that one.
Well, the best drawing on it is, is, again, I've seen different ones, I know that Michael Adams did one initially, he's, as y'all know, the executive director of Water Authority, he's also an engineer, and then the ag committee hired Darryl James, actually, they had Darryl James volunteer because he's not paid, so you're not hired. But on that, 20 acres is the best kind of site, because when you think about parking for an event, or bringing in tractor or trailers that have livestock and things in them, you need a lot of room to move around, so it's like we talk about a lot of things, usually you never say you built it too big, it's always you say it too small. It could probably be set on 15 acres from one of the drawings I saw, but, you know, if there's anybody out in the public that'd like to make a donation of land, we're willing to listen at any point in time, I'm sure the ag committee would like to hear it too, because they're going to be the one that really pushes this through if they want it done. Yes, Commissioner Beatty?
The Chamber Ag Committee is on making, looking at this, correct?
Yes.
Who is on making?
I'd have to get you a list, and I know that we have one of the members, Mr. Frazier, here tonight, he's on there, the two ag teachers, Becky Spicer's on there, the tourism director at the Chamber of Commerce, and I did say both the ag teachers, one at Creekwood and one at Dixon County.
Is that toward this farm to table stuff that's been to raise money for that?
Farm to table does that, farm to fork is the other one, is that right? Yeah. And so they're, they've been working hard to raise money, but the idea was, was to find money and have the community step up that has an interest in ag, and that, exactly. When you hear all the facts, it's kind of boring. We do this Monday through Friday and sometimes on the weekends, so.
Where it comes out on Facebook, I'm not part of it.
You own that committee, Ben.
Oh, I'm not part of it. They were pointing something kind of looking, building to get an idea of what they would want to build, and I'm part of it.
Okay. Do you mind telling us who's on that committee? I have no idea.
I'll help you, Jen.
Amy Cluck.
Claire James. Back of the, state of the...
Okay, thank you.
They're just...
So reach out. This is...
They're all about looking at places, it's...
No.
About the ag committee.
They are. They're, they're a subcommittee of the ag committee. And, and I've had discussions, a lot of people, on the outside basis on it, because my idea was, when it was first brought to us, that the county would assist in some way, and I, I know I've talked, well, I know all my ag people, we've talked about that before, that, you know, I'd like to do something, but again, that's going to be up to this body as everything else is, so a majority of y'all can decide whatever.
Well, if we get, if we get the land, though, maybe that'd go a long way.
It sure would, that'd be very helpful.
I think White Bluff, you mean to do, I think it would be...
Well, you're, you're a viable representative to the City of White Bluff, so...
They, they, Johnny, they, 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 they...
That's it, so, push forward, because again, as I talked to Rustic Grove about the Burns issue, I told him he needs to make a presentation to this body, so, you know, and he said he would put something together, so there's, there's always great ideas, and I think I may be stealing a Ms. Cluck deal, you know, there's always good ideas, but sometime we have to push those aside for the great ideas, and so there may be one out there we're not aware of yet.
You said it's two things, 20 acres to do it, I think, the rec, I think I did that myself.
No, but the deal on that was, it was a little different, on the back railroad street on the backside, there's eight acres, they cleared probably in about 2005. At that time, there was a schism at the ball field between rec and record, and travel baseball, Spook Span, and I think Joey Tuberville may have been the ones of the day, they had that cleared, and were going to put a travel baseball field there, but the city council got the parks board and made arrangements where they could use the field they need. All that being said, they have eight acres back there, that's not enough, but if you do it with the correlation with the, with the fairgrounds, you can lap over on both directions on that. And the offer with the fairgrounds was too, that that building would be made of them during fair weeks and all their other festivals, but they chose back at that time, and I'm going to have to dig through emails, that was at least 2017, if not earlier, on that. It seemed like the Charlotte deal showed up about early 17, so that'd be about four years ago, so that's probably about five or six years ago, they were looking at the fairgrounds area. But they got a real nice flat spot on the back, if you ever drive around that way.
Yeah, they actually, they're, 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 they're sort of the ag that you...
Yeah, it'd be a good fit. Ms. Cluck might just want to move out there full time. Any other questions on that or any other issue, we're in other business, so I've got opinions on a lot of things, and I'll share most of them. You're right about that. And I want to apologize to Commissioner Buckner in front of all y'all. I made a mistake the other day when he called me, and I talked to him rudely, and I apologized, I apologized to him directly, and I want y'all to know what I did. I was out of character that day, and I probably embarrassed him, but more importantly, I embarrassed myself, and I want y'all to know that I messed up, and I just wanted all y'all to know that. And again, Carl, I'm sorry. Any other, other business? You know, you and I've got about a 40-something year history, I don't want to get that balance sheet out, so, that's good. Any other, other business? Want to talk about two different things. The mayor's office, actually it's Dixon County Government, will be hosting the Chamber Coffee on May 27, 2021, at 7:00 a.m. in the Dixon County Government Building, 303 Hensley Drive. The other deal, as well as that being an open house, as I told y'all last time, we're rededicating the meeting room on that that was dedicated to County Executive Janet Harris in the old library, the Bell South Building. Just because we moved buildings, we thought it was appropriate to bring that over with us, so Janet will be there that day along with her family, so the coffee starts at 7:00, but if y'all can, we're going to have the festivities right at 8:00, and spend about 10 minutes on that, because we know everybody needs to saddle up and get on to work, but it'll also be an opportunity for the open house of the county government building. The building's 95% complete, we have one room, we, we're going to finish before the end of this calendar year, but I think you're going to be very proud to see what you see over there with UT being in there, the county clerk's office, and Glenda Penegras, and the trustees office, I think they're pleased with it, you know, as you know, the library's been in there about a year, but I hope you can come enjoy it, because, you know, like a lot of projects, you know, you get spun around, but after the sale of the downtown building and the Bell South Building, we've, have moved into the 21st century with the services we can provide our citizens, so I'm proud of it, and I want y'all to take a look at it, because I think y'all will really be proud of it, because, and not only did the contractors do a good job, but Donnie Baer and WH Beatty and their staff put a lot of sweat equity in that to make that what it is, which saved us a lot of money on that deal, so again, I hope y'all can show up and see that, it's really nice. Yes?
That's starting to want to go, but the farm to fork, they are going to have that this time during Old Timers Day week.
Farm to table.
Farm to table, I'm sorry.
Get it right now.
And if I'm right, Ms. Janet, 150 people, limit, and first, it'd be first come, first served, right? Okay.
It's the 30th, Dixon, so it's Old Timers Day, uh, September 23rd.
23rd, yeah, I couldn't remember that date. Thank you.
Well, they have the timer, and I don't know exactly when, um, when they, when they met, so...
Get in early, they'll be scalping or put them on Ticketmaster or something, and you'll have to pay that up charge, so you definitely get in line early on that. Let's see, the other event that we have coming up is on Monday, it'll be two weeks from now, Monday, May 31 Memorial Day. We've, this will be our eighth annual service for that, it starts at 10:00. This year, we have moved it to Dixon, to the War Memorial Building, we wanted to make sure we could get maximum participation, the previous seven we had here at the, here on the historic courthouse, but we want to try that. It's a suggestion of some of the veterans groups, because we want to make sure it's easy for everybody to get there, so it's kind of against what I'd really like to do about having it here, but it's about making this available to everyone. If you've never been to one, it starts at 10:00 and it usually lasts an hour or less. We have a speaker, you have some singing, and then all those who gave their, who gave the ultimate sacrifice that were Dixon Countians or born in the territory, called Dixon County before there was a Dixon County in the Revolutionary War, all their names are red, and there's a bell toll after every, each of their names because of the sacrifice they made. It's important to remember them, and certainly on that day. So if you're available on Memorial Day, I know a lot of folks have things to do on that, but if you've got an extra 45 minutes, an hour of that Monday morning on, on May 31, I hope you can show up. Any other announcements? We have a birthday drought right now, it looks like, so Dwight will see you at the end of July on that. If there are no other announcement, there is a correction on the final announcement, we have the wrong date in there, so I'm going to read it correctly. The next regular session meeting will be on Monday, June 21, at 2021, at 7:00 p.m. in the Beaufortale Booty Reed Junior County Commission Chamber of the Dixon County Administration Building, Four Court Square, Charlotte, Tennessee. Do you have a motion, second adjourned? Whoa, whoa, okay, I was getting a little excited there, after he gave me instructions, where you don't take your attorney's instructions, he'll call you out. The last other announcement is, let's see, is it the, what are you putting bold here, or should I read the whole thing?
No.
Underlined, okay. At the next, prior to the June 7 meeting, there will be a special call meeting of the county commission on June 7, 2021, at 6:30 p.m. to consider, discuss, and vote on the 2021-22 consolidated budget for the county. So as our attorney said, we will have a budget meeting, we'll have a special session, and then we'll have a work session. Three, three, three meetings in one. Okay. I already made that final announcement. Anything else? Motion second adjourned? Thank you.